Within the margin of error. How many is our margin of error? Quite large in most cases.
One percent.
Well, just for a little bit, it's kind of stuck in here.
Yeah, uh-huh. Lots of hot air being exhaled.
They never said it.
Well, Fred's one of the stars and he's got the bounty covered up next to him.
I was going to say, that's one reason why I don't wear shorts, but...
Could you tell?
Why didn't everybody wear the glare? It's bad enough that I can't, I have a lot to have to deal with that glare.
Have my legs painted somewhere.
Red, white, and blue.
Yes, uh-huh. Red, white, and blue, and then change them every few weeks.
I don't know, I guess there'd be something to do in your...
I'm just sitting in there, dying.
Painting my legs.
Yeah. You would have to get a tan, you could just paint a tan on it.
Yes, uh-huh.
Paint the socks off with a tan.
Actually, I'm throwing socks away because I don't need them. You actually don't need them. Does anybody use socks?
I think they're out of the corner.
Yeah, but we're saying you can do this, throw them out, right?
Or nothing else, they make good powder.
Yeah, here you go.
Powder, whatever.
He's got the new one pushed back there.
Well, the night works is at seven o'clock, so let's do it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Okay, so September eleventh, twenty eighteen, big council meeting in order. And I'm sure we've all thought several times already today, but still does something to say the word September eleventh, well, as well for all of us who remember it. So, all council members present, Engineer Ryan, Senator Big, Administrator Paulson. And do we have any citizen comments on anything that's not already on the agenda? I don't see anybody here writing to comment. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, just the presentation.
Correct.
Just the presentation.
Um, so, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as per...
So...
With the addition of a presentation.
So, who's second there?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to move from the consent agenda, or do we have an motion to adopt that as the...
Our move would be to adopt the consent agenda. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving along. Presentation covered hearings, recognitions, and proclamations. We have a visitor here, Mr. Dave Johnson, who wishes to address us, and you can step up and do so right at this time.
Your honor, how's it going?
Introduce yourself.
My name is Dave Johnson, I'm a member of Cottage Grove VFW Motorcycle Riders Group. We were the first charter in the state of Minnesota.
Can you speak up, Dave?
We're with Cottage Grove VFW Motorcycle Riders Group, we're the first charter in the state of Minnesota. There's only a second other one up in Monticello, Minnesota for their VFW folks. On the same weekend as your Community Roast Festival, we had our inaugural ride on Saturday. And we had made a pre-ride earlier in the week and spoke with Chief Schleiner about potential traffic hazards going through the city and making that turn from fifty-six onto sixty and going towards east. He said that he'd be willing to provide traffic protection or safety if he or one of his officers was available because of also the roast festival. He did provide escort service as we entered the city limits on Highway fifty-six and stopped traffic for us on Highway sixty and fifty-six intersection and proceeded with our inaugural ride to the east and did encounter any hazards or safety other than to be providing us safety and traffic direction. In appreciation for that, the VFW riders would like to present a certificate of appreciation to Chief Police Lee Schleiner for support of veterans and VFW riders in the state of Minnesota. Thank you very much, your honor. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got your good side.
I'm a former deputy sheriff from Dodge County, I worked at that center patrol for eight years, so I know this area pretty well. Chief went above and beyond kind of the duties required. At that weekend, it was a community festival, which he was rightly concentrating on his community's safety and protection, and went out of his way to give us protection also from your traffic intersection. So I know well, as a former officer and the community is similar to this, that he did go above and beyond. And should be also recognized on the 8th, especially for first responders, that he gives a fine example to your community for selection of the first responders, police officers, and fire officers that he protected from the community from the state. Thank you again, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, honor.
Thank you. I just want to add that Lee and everyone on the fire department and all of our officers do remember that community doesn't stop at the city limit. So, that's red town celebration, but the surrounding community still counts just as all of that in pronunciation. Engineering, Centennial Drive Paving Update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Counsel. Public Works Director is here tonight as well, so he can supplement my comments with any additional that he has. Centennial Drive Paving, as you recall, we got two quotes for that work, and you guys considered those at your last meeting and awarded the work to Rochester Sandy Gravel. We've got a pre-construction meeting scheduled with them for tomorrow morning, and they're anticipating starting work the week of September twenty-fourth. And I don't think the work should take all that long, it'll be probably a couple of weeks worth of work, and so by mid-October, I would expect that they'll help everything wrapped up down there, it's a tenhill drive. So, everything is moving forward as it should be.
Understood. That ten to town will be considerably better shape than it was last fall this time.
Yes, yep. Nice to keep the gravel on that road.
Yes.
Underneath our new blacktop pavement.
And, and B, the smoke testing?
Smoke testing, there was a memo in your packet with the results of the smoke testing. Smoke testing, as you recall, is a, it's a, one of the tools for investigating and flow infiltration, where we introduce a harmless, just a smoke into the sewer system, so we can track and see where it's coming out, broken pipes or cross connections with sewer, storm sewer drains, or building roof drains, things like that. All the work was done on August twenty-second, and included with the memo was a map showing the summary of the findings. If you pardon the pun, there was no big smoking gun that was found. We did not find any major cross connections with the storm sewer. There were a handful of broken caps that were found on service lines, on service clean-out lines, that can be repaired, the public works has identified all those and will be repairing those. There's also a number of manhole lids in town that have openings that will let, that are open vented to the air, so they let water in. They were identified by smoke, so they can be inventoried now and new ones can be purchased to swap those out with solid top self-sealing lids that will prevent the flow of water through those holes. But, so, so the point is, we did find a number of issues, but all relatively small issues. Taking care of those will have an effect on the INI, should reduce it somewhat, but I think the, one of the take, the other takeaway is we need to do more investigation. To recall, some of the other tools, we're flow monitoring that we'd like to do, and also, lost my train of thought, but televising that we want to do on some of the key runs in town, some of the key sewers in town, so I think it's still wise to budget for those activities in twenty nineteen, so that we can continue to investigate INI. Of course, every gallon of INI that we can reduce from the system is one less gallon we have to treat at the plant, which reduces the treatment cost at the plant, so you do get a return on your investment for being able to identify and reduce the INI. And I should note, if you'll recall, when we talked about the smoke testing, and we had a budget of three thousand dollars, and we'd identified three areas in the sewer system in order of priority. And we were to start with priority area one, and then go to priority area two, and then on to three, and get as much done as we could for the budget we had. Well, as it turned out, it worked really slick, it went really efficiently, the city staff was very helpful to our staff that was out doing the work. We got all three priority areas done, plus some additional stuff done, all in one day. So, we got more than we wanted done for less than the budgeted cost. So, it really went effectively, and at this time, we don't have any other areas in town that we've identified for the need for smoke testing, and maybe we'll learn more as time goes on, and we'll identify some and do another round in the future, but right now, we've got all the areas done that we wanted to get done, so we'll continue going through the results of the information with the public works staff and...
It's kind of a bad news, good news situation. The good news is you got a lot done, the bad news is you didn't find as many big problems as you anticipated, so there are items on board.
We did fix those four caps that were identified, you're replaced. So it's just been managed.
Yep. And we did find, we talked about the run down by Pearl Creek where some of those manholes are, had been lost in time, basically, and the accessibility of those is pretty tough. We were able to find one of those with the smoke testing, and we were able to find one more of those with some televising that was done, and we'll talk about that when we get to the Second Street project. So, did make some progress in that line, there's still some work left to be done, you think there's still one or two more manholes yet that need to be located, but...
Oh, they're being sold.
Oh, we did find a whole entire lot.
Mine is all now. Yeah, there's just, I think we need to get some lid slot door in there.
Yep.
It probably would be nice to sleeve that, because the roof penetration is, that's all of them.
Yeah.
Basically, that's all pretty old lining through there, so...
Yeah.
Probably a problem.
Yeah, if the roots are finding their way in the line, that's because there's moisture in the line, they're trying to get it to moisture out through it. If the roots can get in there, that means the water can get in there too, and so there's just more locations. If the pipe itself is in good structural condition, we can line that pipe and eliminate those leaking joints with an internal lining project.
Big if.
It's a big if.
Well, it's, the first two rounds are filmed, so when the film shows up for this jump in the head, Second Street stuff, we'll see it.
Yeah, we'll hear reports on that, yeah.
Wayne, how is the flow at the treatment center after this last heavy rain?
Now it's, we're down to three and a quarter, so two hundred and twenty-five thousand. The night of the rain, and the next day, we're at one point two nine. The day before the rain, we're at just over two hundred thousand.
Pretty obvious what's going on.
There's a, there's a direct connection.
Yeah, I was going to say, is the possibility of a storm sewer pelting into the sanitary zone?
So, there's one roof drain, and the owner is working on it, but as far as our smoke testing, we had no catch bases with smoke coming out of them.
Right.
So we can eliminate that, which I was, I was pretty sure there was one, but from the smoke testing, we did pretty much all of town with the smoke testing, and nothing was found. So that the big smoking gun, we thought there was, there isn't. So I think it boils down to, it's either bad pipe, some pumps, and roof drains. And if there's a P trap in the roof drain, it won't show up in the smoke testing.
Right. Yeah, the smoke can't get through that.
How long does it take for the volume to go down? Is that almost instantaneous, the rain stops and the volume goes down?
It depends on saturation of the ground. If the ground is really saturated, like in the springtime, takes a long time for the flow to go down.
So that would mean that getting water into the sewer system from the ground?
Yes, correct. So right now, we're still high, we're in a manageable amount, but it's still higher than normal.
And have you been able to find, are all the sewer connections hooked up to the city, or are there still a lot of them that are kind of on their own? As in? As in, I know I was living in a house that had three, four houses hooked up to a drain tile type system, so that there were lots of gaps, and anytime there was a rain, the water would be seeping into the system for several days.
As far as any drain tiles level with this, we do need, we talked about some pumping inspection, we do need to give the letter of notice, we need to get that done yet this year.
So you don't know if everybody's hooked up to the sewer system?
We don't know.
And they're probably, there are certainly ours, shared laterals got them, some of those are probably, probably leaky.
We know there's shared laterals, where two houses share one line. I mean, we proved that, you know, in the tally.
Right.
Yeah.
And how do you determine which ones those are, so that they can be required to hook up to the sanitary sewer within a while, a year, two years, or whatever?
We're kind of talking about two different things. The houses with shared laterals, they're both hooked to the sewer, it just says that both homes share a pipe, which is good and bad, and it's good because it saves them money, but the neighbor might be the guy causing an issue that backs up the other person's house. And we, when we did First Street, we identified those.
One tier ago, yeah.
So, a lot of these, we don't know who is shared, we just know some of them are from past sewer experiences, where one neighbor had to call plumber, and they went in and came with their private lateral and said, hey, your neighbor's hooked on with you. And then they take action from there, they decide to split, or they just clean the line and keep going. It's really up to the homeowners. But, I think the thought is the some pumps. We have to go through and see, I know a lot of guys have them valved, you know, summer, winter, but if they're not valving them the right way, or just flat hooked up to the sanitary, that's what we got to do.
What were the records of the last time some pump inspections were done, wasn't it like in the eighties?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, so twenty, twenty years, roughly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
I think it was in between ninety-eight, ninety-nine.
So, certainly due for, to go through again and... Because the flow increase is pretty, it's pretty quick.
It's like forty-five minutes.
Yeah. So the water starts getting there, right away, so some of that water is being collected and transported to the sewer system pretty efficiently.
Yes.
Like it's, like it's coming through a roof drain, or like it's coming through a some pump.
Yeah, and then the, not just last storm, but the storm before, it was like three in the morning, I'd call them.
Yeah.
And it was full of manhole lids, and you got the pipes are flowing full, clear water.
Right. In the middle of the night, with very little use of the sanitary system.
Wayne, refresh my memory, what was it that was done in June or July? I know there was paperwork sent out, there were certain areas of the city that you went to check on.
The people went out for the, the smoke testing stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
We never did mail the letter off, we talked about it at council meeting while doing some pump inspections, we just...
So that may be the next step between now and possibly this fall or spring, yeah?
Yeah, that's, I think that'd be the best next step.
Yeah. And I think the couple of other ones would be to consider budgeting for flow monitoring and/or the televising for twenty nineteen, so we can do that work next spring, summer.
Doing some flow monitoring can give you a better idea of which areas are likely to...
Yeah, you start towards the downstream end and identify where your heaviest flows are coming from, and you'll put them on there and let it sit there for, you know, a couple of weeks. And so go through a couple of rain events, and you'll start to identify, and then you can keep moving up to line to certain, to key junctures, or key junctions, and you can start to follow which pipes have those heavy flows, and then you can focus on investigating those pipes through televising or through inspections. So it's, it's an effective tool, but it takes some time, it takes some money for the equipment, and...
That's right.
Yeah, we have the equipment, yeah, but there's a rental, and that's why we did the smoke testing issue, because it was a small dollar amount that you could fit into the existing budget, but the flow monitoring and the sewer televising are larger dollar amounts that we need to identify, be identified for the twenty nineteen budget.
So, move on to item C, Second Street.
And this is, we started to talk a little bit about this, Second Street, the, the project, you authorized us to investigate lining the sewer on Second Street, with the primary benefit of reducing the mercury level from where those historical deposits from the old dentist office were. A secondary benefit would be to reduce any INI coming through that main line for that area. So we've been working on the investigation, the, all the sewer televising has been done, they televised the sewer main, and they televised, they identified where all the services are, they televised the two services, one to the current dentist office, one to the old dentist office, and the one they had to get access to the building and actually televise it from the building coming back out. So all the televising is done, we're waiting on the reports, we should be getting those, I think, within the next couple of weeks. There is a manhole inspection that's going to be done yet, and Public Works Director and his staff are going to take care of that, the manhole inspection at the intersection of Second and Red Wing. So, we, what, the information should all be in hand by the end of the month, and then we can start scoping out the actual design work of what the project is, and laying out the preliminary design, then we can report back to you what we think the recommended improvements are going to be, and, you know, an updated estimate of what the cost is going to be. And then, once we get all that pulled together, we can bring it to you for consideration of authorizing the final design, so that we can actually prepare plans and specifications that could go off for bid.
And this work will satisfy MBCA that we're doing our due diligence and...
Yes. Yeah, it'll show them that we're continuing to identify issues and making progress on the issues and making good faith efforts to it.
That's our biggest thing, is to be sure they're satisfied, so...
Yep, because we do have that permit renewal coming up in February of twenty twenty, and we need to be consistent.
And they do have, if our duty is to find it, if they don't...
They do, they have, they have jurisdiction over, over our refine.
Then, item D, the capital improvement plan.
This one, we've been working with the administrator and Public Works Director on capital improvement plan, we've had two meetings so far, we've gathered a lot of information, a lot of data from the city, we've been putting that all together into a master spreadsheet, and now we're working on organizing that, and prioritizing that, and separating it into operation and maintenance issues versus capital projects, and starting to set up the framework, so that we can start to then assign information to the projects that we're identifying. So, we've probably got, I would guess, two more meetings at the staff level with the administrator and the public works director, before we've got a draft that's ready to come to the council for review, but we're still hoping to get that all pulled together and back to the council yet this fall. So next meeting will probably be either late this month or early part of October with the administrator and Public Works Director.
Okay. And, we go, we have nothing to add, but pleasant change. So we would move on to the old business staff. Discuss now, Jeff. Temporary waiver of residential building permit fees. Something we've been discussing and tossing back and forth for quite some time, since it was in spring.
So, anyway, there's a, the one thing I wanted to talk about tonight, before we got into the final discussion, or the discussion on this, was we did put together a spreadsheet that shows building permits from the last two years, and it shows what the total cost is, what the cost of the structures were, what the permit fee was, you know, it's got all the fee broken down. So, basically, what we tried to do was show the value of the structure, for instance, the first one had a project valuation, the first listing there in the spreadsheet of two hundred eighty-two thousand, the permit fee was, two thousand thirteen, the building permit fee was eight hundred, so the total fee was twenty-nine fifty-nine, almost three thousand dollars. Now, I talk about in the memo fifty percent reduction. This is just kind of to give you something to talk about, because the last couple of meetings, it's been talked about commercial, residential, you know, what should be included or not included. So what we, what I'm recommending is, if you move ahead with this, is it just be residential this time, and that what I'm recommending, I guess, at this point is fifty percent. But, that's subjective number, it's not really based on anything, except, you know, the question is, how much is it going to cost the city, because obviously, probably, or not obviously, but probably eighty percent of the fee goes to the county, you know, to cover their costs. So, the city would still pay out a little bit, but the, obviously, the end idea is that if we get a new home, it's going to be more tax-based over, you know, our, every year manually. But, maybe as a starting point, fifty percent, that way, you know, the city would stop to pay some out, but I don't think it would break us, not that it is to break us, but I mean, in a matter of speaking. And basically, that it would allow this to be advertised, signs could be put up, you know, et cetera, and I talked about in the memo that could be marketed, that we are offering, you know, incentives or reduced building permit fees or something to that effect. So, we have something, and then if you do it over, say, a year period... So, we have something, and then if you do it over, say, a year period, or some measurable period, then you can see if it makes a difference or not in, you know, the number of new home permits that we get. So, that's, so I just wanted to give the council something to, you know, kind of a recommendation, that maybe it's a starting point, or maybe you like it, but something to, you know, say, okay, because you talked about the concept, but now we're past the concept.
Yes, this is exactly what I was asking for in our last meeting when I.
Yep, so we got it put together, and the other thing is, to think about then is, I guess I'd recommend for new home construction, I wouldn't recommend applying it to other, you know, building permits. And the other question that was brought up to me is, do you want, does the council want to just do it for owner occupied? Or do you want to do it for all new home construction? I've given that some thought, and I guess, based on the number of homes that we get every year, probably just keep it for any new home construction, whether it's a spec home, or whether it's owner occupied, especially the way the market is right now, the spec homes are really going, I mean, they really don't stay, nothing stays on the market, so.
Final goal is to increase tax base, and that's got no bearing on whether it's owner occupied or not.
You'll have a measurable time period to say, is this making a difference or not, and continue it or not. And if you do it at a certain level, not the whole thing, then it'll be easier to go back, if you decide at some point to go back to, you know, the normal fees again, it'd be a lot easier just to transition back to that.
You're assuming, though, that this is going to really raise a lot of new homes at the taxpayer's expense. And I don't see the county, they're the ones that get all the revenue, but I don't see them cutting any slack.
They haven't been asked to either.
No, that they don't do it for anybody else, so why would they do it for Canyon? So, I, I see this, what, what, this last couple of years, if we do this, I can't blame these people that have done it for the last two years, they were, we paid a full mountain. We should get, we should get a re, some return. And if I was one of these people, and you start giving breaks, well, I want some, I want some money back. And all this is a taxpayer's expense, and this is money that we could use for other projects, we're just talking about with our sewer system and so forth, where this money could be used. So I, I gotta be honest with you, and for, once you open this door, you're not going to close it. Uh, you say for twelve, twelve months, no. A person comes in, twelve months and one week, and you say, no, I'm sorry, well, then you got a very mad person. And he's going to say, look, heck with it, I'm moving to some other place. So I, we've got it, working in the way it is, plus there's a lot of extra work for the staff here, I'm, I'm totally against this.
Are, are building permits required? I mean, would we necessarily have to, by law, have built building permits? Or could we say, building, it didn't cost you a dollar?
No, I think you have to, you have to, well, you have to have building permits.
Why?
The state building, well, cities, I believe, all have to have, adopt the state building code. The county has adopted this, and I think all the Emily's police have adopted because of that. I'd have to go back and look at that authority, but, I mean, cities all have.
Guarantee you to have insurance companies.
They all have.
You know, the reality, Mark's correct, you've adopted the state building code, in fact, we do adopt that, cities adopt that, the biggest impact would be on insurance for the city, you have a little problem getting, you know, rates for everybody else from the last.
That's a kind of word for no.
That's the whole purpose of the only code.
As far as, as far as people being upset because they get construction before this went into effect, and they didn't get it, or program was in effect, and, uh, they did something right after it went away, well, that's the way the world works sometimes, these things happen in a bad time, and you get it. And, now, with the fifty percent here, okay, we're looking at the cost of the city, bottom line here, over two years. Over two years, just under five, fifteen thousand. Not a big amount. On the other hand, looking at that reduction compared to the value of the project, it's, uh, less than, it's right around seven tenths of one percent. I really have my doubts as to whether that's going to make a big difference to anyone. People are funny, maybe it would, you know, people will, people go to the casino every weekend, and you know math is against that too. So I can't say whether it would work or not, if it was to be done, yes, I'd say definitely would have to put a time limit on it, and one year, two years, that's, doesn't make a great deal of difference, but one year would probably be enough to see whether there was any noticeable difference, two years would give you a little bit more dependable data. I have my doubts as to whether, how effective it would be. Is it worth trying? I think I've got a point here, I could thought of, yeah, that decision. You never know if it's going to work or not unless you try it, and I always look at it, you know, I'm trying to look forward instead of backwards on this. And it's a limited time, twelve months is what I brought it up. And, uh, let's put it this way, there's plenty advertising on TV right now for new vehicles, limited time until October thirty-first, and the rebate is off, okay, this is the same thing, it'll be put into the minutes, and as of December, well, I'm just using from January first to December thirty-first, and that's it. You know yourself, that's a permit. There's many things that you do that you wind up, if you don't get it paid, you pay a fee for it because of its late. So I'm looking at it, and I'm glad that you brought that up, Mike, because I did start looking at it as to what the total cost of over two million dollars versus what it was, and I figured it was a fraction of a percentage. And you're right on what you're saying. And for that amount, let's say, let's, okay, it's lose the fourteen thousand dollars, yes, but what will it generate in time to come? Are we getting a bigger bang off of fourteen thousand, or are we getting a bigger bang off of two billion dollars? I want to see more homes, for a reason that we're also building an industrial park. We have to have people here, we want to keep them here, and I don't know one business downtown, um, the meat market, or I should say Canyon Market, I'm sure that they would be happy to open up another lane for their customers. I believe there's a few gas stations in this town that would like it, the furniture company, uh, stores here, the jewelry store, the mechanics here in town, I think it would be worth a try, a gamble, and I'm using you, going back to the casino part of it. I think it's worth a try to try it.
If I'm reading this right, the actual increase in cost to the city would be over eleven thousand, right, not fourteen?
Yeah, based on the current numbers, now, if the goal is reached, well, or the, the goal is more houses, so if we use the last couple of years, and say we have forty-five a year, um, and we get six or seven, obviously, it's going to be more than that.
Right, but based on the last two.
Yeah, but based on the.
I wonder how house would do that.
Last twenty-four months.
Money for, for gone, would come in otherwise, that's where the total comes out to, you know, fifty.
Yeah, and honestly, I don't have, I have not done this before, so I, I don't have any experience in other communities as far as how much difference this will or won't make, I, I'm being totally honest with you, I don't know with residential. But, um, it, you know, it is, obviously, there's going to be a cost to it, and you have to know that going in. But I don't know either way, I know other communities have done this, or other types of things to help, and I don't know, you know, if this will generate more or not, I'm not really sure, you know. I mean, I don't, we don't have a feel, we haven't done this before, and I haven't done it before, so I, you know, in all honesty, don't know. If it's going to, how much difference it's going to make.
So many other, there are so many other things that affect the home building besides just the local climate that, you know.
Personally, I don't think this would make, uh, any difference at all. But there's no way of measuring whether we've gotten two, three more houses built because of this.
And it may or may not be a measurable, quantifiable thing when it's all done.
Right.
We don't know.
In which case, it, it hasn't cost us anything, because everybody who's going to build here would build regardless.
So it would cost you.
No, it would cost, you'd be giving up that.
It would, they'd give you something back from.
No, I understand, I would.
He's got a point, it, it would be difficult to, impossible to know whether there was more building going on than there would have been otherwise.
Yes.
You could look back and see if there was more than the historical average, but you wouldn't know whether that would happen anyway or not.
Well, that's like the casino, they always give you something, and since you mentioned casino, they give something back, because they know they're going to get your money sooner or later. So that's why I don't go, but this is what.
A little bit different. It's like, well, how do we take it, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
I just think that that amount of money, that I think it would generate itself within the community itself, meaning that you're going to have, you're going to have things to, uh, to build that home. Uh, if people come in, sure, we can't, can't come along and say, yeah, I, I moved here because I got a, a discount on my building permits, let's put it that way. But why not try it and see what's what happens? It's a gamble, lay it down for twelve months and see what happens, if it works, it works. If it don't, we can go back.
Well, at least know you have some quantifiable information.
Yeah, that makes it a lot easier to.
Okay, that's the point I wanted the council to add.
Yeah.
And. Well. So do we do anything about it, or just.
Yeah, if someone makes a motion, and that motion gets seconded, and we vote to proceed with it, then we would. And I will make one comment there, I think probably it would be a wise idea to make that a, a roll call vote.
Well, that'll happen if, depending on how the vote goes. You know, but it appears that may be the case, or if there's a split vote, then you'll have to do a roll call. I think we know that there's, I mean, otherwise you don't do a roll call unless there's a split vote. Is that correct?
You can identify pretty well on a resolution, a, a roll call, somebody can ask for that under Robert's rules, that's fine. Uh, the reality is, the only roll call that's required is under term ordinance vote. So for a resolution, sure, you can say that and do it, but it's pretty identifiable, the A's and the N's, we may get five.
But this isn't a resolution, so.
Okay. Well, since this is my, that project for the year, I'm going to make the motion waive the temporary building permits fees for one month, or I mean for one year, I'm sorry. Uh, is it acceptable, acceptable from January first of twenty nineteen to December thirty-first, twenty nineteen? And I'll second that.
And that's as printed here in the spreadsheet with the fifty percent figure?
Yes.
Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Round motion passes, we'll see what happens.
Man, wouldn't that be nice if we had people flooding in here, wanting to take advantage?
Wouldn't it be lovely?
Yes.
I would be.
We have to expand the city limits because we're getting some.
Go.
Get carried away.
We'll go.
Fire rise.
Fire rise, I mean, you get carried away, you get a fire truck down there. So, next. Next possibly controversial topic here. Documentance ninety-one, amending section two oh five of the Canyon City Code regarding salaries of elected officials. And this, we also went over in great detail at the last meeting. Is, council member and mayor compensation is at the same level it's been since two thousand five. This.
I thought it said two thousand.
Two thousand two, I'm sorry.
That's incorrect.
This information that I got from the Lake Minnesota Cities as to what other cities of a comparable size paid, um, and granted, it's not all cities in the state, because not all cities in the state responded to that, but with the information that I had to work with, the average came out to mayor at thirteen hundred and ten, council at twenty-two thirteen. We are currently at twenty-five hundred for mayor and nineteen hundred for council. I also checked out the consumer price index change from the, from two thousand two to two thousand seventeen. A lot of the organizations, businesses, governments, entities use that to set wage and salary changes, and that has gone up thirty-five point nine percent in that period. So if you use that thirty-five point nine percent, or actually thirty-five percent figure, that would put the mayor's salary at thirty-three seventy-five, which is a bit above the average in the state. And, uh, council members at twenty-five sixteen, which again, is a little bit above the state average right now. Uh, this has been a topic, this has come up here at council twice in the last few years. It's also been a topic on the mayor's association listserv twice in the last few years, and quite a few cities are going through this same thing, should we raise it, should we not? I personally feel that, uh, anybody here who was on a job, that they were getting paid exactly the same in two thousand eighteen as they did in two thousand two, would be looking for a different job.
Well, Mike, if you're in here for the money, then give yourself a raise. This is the city of Canyon, these are taxpayers' dollars, and we're representing the taxpayers.
Who was on the council on two thousand two, when it was raised? Anybody?
No.
The reasons for it?
No, we have to go back.
Well, as I've stated in the past, and I'll state it again, I think that increasing the compensation would encourage more younger people, and especially younger women, to be interested in getting involved in city politics, which we desperately need, everybody sitting here at this desk right now is well toward the end of our careers, and frankly, none of us are going to be sitting here in another ten or fifteen years. We need to get the new people started coming up, and especially in today's economy, it's, uh, real common for people, especially families, young people with kids, to be working two and three jobs, and, uh, find it really hard to forego an opportunity to make a few dollars to do their. their civic duty.
That's, that's exactly right. This is a civic duty, not a job.
Except we're treated as employees and isn't employee the job?
If you say so.
Are we treated as employees? Yes, we are. We're given W-2 forms, taxes are taken out. We're peace workers, not paid by the hour, but still-
We are considered by the IRS to be employees for-
Yes, right.
Not for insurance purposes.
I don't know, we just possibly raised some more expenses tonight. I don't feel good about the raise at all.
Well, I'd like a little more history or once I'd like to go backwards. I would like to know why they raised it in 2002. That might give us something to look forward to or we can do some direction as of 2018 as we're sitting here tonight.
So we have to go back and see who was on the council then? I don't know if Tom Junehurst was mayor back then, yeah? But we could ask, you know, the councilors.
We're always, we're always asking the city staff to go back and give us more information. This is cut, pretty much cut and dry, either, either satisfied with what we got, I mean, we got, we're not in it for the, well, I mean, we shouldn't be in it for the money. Money should not have even any issue. Figure out the council for the money, then you don't belong here.
Fred, I agree with you, but I also feel that there's a reason for compensation. That's like handing out a tip in a way when you go to a restaurant.
Well, we just noted that, uh, in the budget, the city is going up another two and a half percent on all employees for the cost of living. The city council has not had any increase for the cost of living since 2002. I would like to find out how much the cost of living has gone up year by year and just add them all up to see what we should be making compared to everybody else in the city.
Now, it seems that everything is closely related to that consumer pricing, that's not-
Oh, yes, right. And yes, that we, it's going up or down compared to that.
If you're on social security, you know probably 1% a year you get, so you figure out that-
Or none.
And, and most of our taxpayers, a lot of them aren't on social security. And we're, they're the ones that were asking for, to compensate us more.
Well, I hate to think that we're valued less and less every year, which is what is the case.
So Scott, what is the, if this resolution is, if they proceed with this resolution, like how late, how in September, would they be able to still do that, you know, before, it has to be adopted before the election?
It has to be in place before the, the election. Or if it's not in place, it doesn't take effect till the next meaningful election.
Okay, so would that be, it has to be then done either September, October?
Yes.
Okay, so you could, I'm not telling you to kick the can down the road, but, I mean, if you opted to table it or whatever, you could still make the decision next month, but then after that, I mean, you have to do it by the October council meeting?
Good, I have great doubts that anything would change in that period of time, but there'd be one interesting thing, now, I doubt this very much, but I don't know it for a fact, but I very much doubt that there is any city council in the state that does not get compensated at all. Now, maybe it would be a beautiful world if everybody was willing and able to donate as much time as it took to do these things, but I don't think anybody does it for absolutely And as I said, this has come up twice in the last two or three years. Now, listserv, this is a topic in a lot of cities. Some of the, some of the cities that I did get information on here are in the process of increasing their compensation. A lot of them will be going into effect in the beginning of the next year after the election.
So Fred, you sell vehicles, uh, do you still charge 2002 prices?
Seems that way.
But is it that way?
You know, I gotta look at it maybe a little bit different, but when you sign a blank check, join any one branch of the service, you still get paid to. And all of our elected officials are getting paid, some of them way out of line. And I hate to make a figure of a compensation that it should be raised to, but I definitely think that a motion should be made to increase them. What I do not know. I run for council because I wanted to as a citizen, not necessarily saying that I can do an improvement, but at least I was there. If we start looking at some of our, um, we've got a plebevararian candidate this year, is that correct, or council?
We hope there will be.
And that, and this is a thing that we have to plant the seed a little bit more and that Mike has brought it up, to bring it up, to be of more value. I can say this here, Brian, that this place that I took was a lot of it, yeah, he was tired of it, but it also was a financial burden to him. And I will say that there's a lot of times I could be doing something else on a Thursday night or a Tuesday night. All of us could be, but we're doing it for a reason. But I also feel that we should have some kind of compensation for it.
For myself, I was pleasantly surprised when that first envelope came and I found out that I was being paid for this. What? This is a good deal. Uh, so I certainly didn't get on the city council to make money. On the other hand, that check, when it does come, is certainly welcome. As somebody who doesn't sell vehicles, uh, becomes it handy.
Yeah, you know, uh, some people would say that I'm on a fixed income, but actually I'm on a broken income.
How many people would we have in Congress if we were paying them this, if they didn't get a raise in, since 2002? Would we have a mass, mass exit?
Mayor, I gotta ask you, what are you looking at for compensation overall? You're the leader.
Well, I've been looking at this a lot, as I said, comparing the consumer price index what other cities are paying, um, if I were, and I guess I'm, I guess I will to get the ball rolling, I'll propose a motion to, uh, for a 15% increase, that would be 2,875 for mayor-